I call this meeting to order. I'll note for the record that all members of council are present and accounted for, except for Councilman Binder, who won't be joining us this evening, an illness in the family. And as always, we begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you're able, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, proclamation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on tonight's agenda is a proclamation to celebrate the life of Alpharetta City Attorney Sam Thomas. If Sam's family and friends would like to join us in front of the podium, please do so.
Now, if you don't mind, I'd like you to face that way.
You've got the mic.
Yeah. Y'all, Sam Thomas was the city attorney for a long, long time, maybe five years or something. And he passed away in August, and we truly miss Sam every day here in the halls of Alpharetta. So we wanted to honor Sam the night with a couple of proclamations. But first, I would like Jared, if you will, introduce your family.
My name is Jared Thomas. I am his oldest son. I'm 42 years old. This is my wife Jennifer. This is my daughter Paige and her twin brother Michael. This is my brother Joseph, who is the youngest. This is my mother Dale Thomas, who was married to him for 44 years. This is my brother-in-law Bert and his wife Laura Olson, who is also my younger sister. This is their son Anders, and she is pregnant with a little girl who is also due on her birthday, which is February 18th of next year. So we're very happy to be here tonight, and this is a room in the previous room that my dad spent a lot of, a lot of time in. And, you know, when Mayor, or now Representative Martin reached out to me about this, he, we had to talk about the date, but I certainly knew the night of the week it would be because Mondays have been, you know, have been sacred in our family for a long time, that that was, that was time that was dedicated to this, and that's time that he, you know, he considered it well-spent, especially as things were ending. So thank you for having us tonight.
Thanks, Jared. The next, we have Sam's work-life as part of the attorney-law firm, Jack Birch.
My name is Jack Birch, and I was a partner with Sam Thomas for years and years. With us is Wes Skinner and Scott Busby, who was with us for a number of years, and of course Mike Stacy.
He's out.
And just like, just like Bob said, we all miss Sam greatly, think about him all the time. I miss talking with him about everything under the sun: law, politics, Georgia football, family, all of those things. And Sam had an incredible capacity. He was not only a brilliant lawyer, but he was also a good counselor. And he could counsel beyond just what the law was, but provide what some people outside of the law might call common sense, that sometimes seems to be missing amongst lawyers. But Sam was a wonderful counselor. We all dearly loved him, and we miss him.
Next is Representative Chuck Martin for the proclamation from the state of Georgia. I'm sorry.
Yes, please. Oh, I'm sorry. I should have said, this is, no, this is, this is Sam Thomas's office wife. Those of you who have a longtime assistant will know, and Terry Rice has been with Sam, she'll have to tell you the story, but I think from the beginning.
I worked with Sam for 36 years, and he was a best friend to me. He was my office husband. I adore his family, but he was a great guy, and a great friend.
Chuck, come on up.
Well, Terry, you may not remember, but you, you spent a lot of time with me on the phone back in the, back in the days, early 90s. Mayor, I'm going to apologize, I'm going to take just a second here. I don't do this well, but, but they all, I mean, to all the family, thanks for the sacrifice you had to leave him up here with us, or let him come up here with us all the nights you did. You know, even those times when the police came to get us, I mean, I don't know if you sent him or my wife sent him, but sometimes we'd be out behind the old city hall at 12:30, 1 o'clock at night, behind his truck or mine, you know, talking about football, or what one of the kids were doing. And he was, I mean, he, he was, as he said, counselor. He said, lawyer, sometimes I have a common sense. I want respect to my council members and mayor here. Politicians don't always have it either. And he was always a voice of reason, you know, for me, and a great counsel for me. He was somebody that I just felt comfortable in the room with. You know, he always had you from a legal perspective, but he also wouldn't let you get in a place where you would put yourself or your city at risk. And that's when, I want to just, I asked Jack if I could say this, as an attorney-client works for the client, right? I was the client, and so I can tell these stories now. Not going to be too specific, but there was once upon a time when the council, this is just how good Sam Thomas was for the city and citizens of Alpharetta, y'all. We awarded a bid contract, and the way that went back at the time, we did, it was the award went for the mayor to negotiate to this bidder, you know, bidder X, but, you know, to negotiate the contract, do the final contract then. So we had them the next Tuesday morning, it was a pretty big contract. They came in the office, we were sitting there, and we were talking to them, and there was a point in the contract, they just weren't, weren't happy, they, they wouldn't do it. And it was a standard thing that we should have to protect the citizens of Alpharetta. And we talked around about it, and finally I said, well, appreciate y'all coming in, we'll go to the next bid. And the guy looked across the desk at me, I'm pretty sure I was too far out over my skis, not sure I had the authority to do that. Guy looked across the desk at me and said, you can't do that, Mayor. I looked over at Sam, and Sam said, yes, you can. I don't know if we could or not. They left the office, and about four minutes later, they came in, and the citizens of Alpharetta got a better deal because of Sam Thomas. Last story, but I got to tell you, recommended we settle a case once upon a time. The council voted to settle the case. Sam, Sam, he will always be Sam to me, I don't mean no disrespect, Mr. C. Sam Thomas, I'll never, never, Sam called, he said, we got a problem because they're going to settle, but they want us to pay their attorney's fees. I said, no. You know, they're getting everything they want, they're the ones that brought this in. And he said, I said, what would you do? He said, well, you know, y'all said settle. I said, can we win? He said, absolutely. So we didn't settle. Sam went to court. Again, Sam won for the citizens of the city, or Sam in your firm, Jack, won for the citizens of Alpharetta. He was just one of the best people that I know, and survived five elected mayors here, starting with Mayor Phillips, then myself, then Mayor Lettich, then Bellal, and now current Mayor Gilvin. In between, there have been some interim mayors or some temporary mayors while we were going, I think, I think Mr. Mitchell was a mayor for a time, I know Mr. Payne was. So that's seven in all that he survived, but he was always the common force. So I'm not going to read this whole thing, because they're probably reading it as much the same, but I just want to read the part that it is Sam to me. And you'll, you'll get the whole resolution. Sam Thomas, above all, will be remembered for his loyalty, his friendship, his strong faith, his work ethic, thoughtfulness, and of course, his witty sense of humor. He could deliver a one-liner like nobody I've ever known. Dale, we love Sam, he did so much for our community, and we thank you and your family for everything that you did in letting us have this. And with this, from the State House of Representatives, we'd like to present this to you on this day, recognizing C. Sam Thomas for his service to the city and citizens of Alpharetta.
Chuck, thanks, and next we'll hear from you. Sure, I'll say something. Gosh, sat next to Sam for over 22 years, every Monday night, just, we, we just had a great time. And we would bet on the outcomes of some zoning matters, just, because we sat in back of y'all for most of the time, y'all couldn't see what we were doing. Arthur would look back every once in a while when we were, when we talked to Lila, and we would comment back down. But it's, it's just, it was an honor to work next to Sam, to serve with him. Sam had the unique ability, as an attorney, to not over-lawyer things. And I'll just let that sink in, because he was that brilliant to not over-lawyer things. And I always respect Sam for that, and just love him and miss him every day here. And love the family, gosh, all the stories. Joseph at Georgia, and Jared with the triathlons, Laura softball and coaching, Dale with coy hounds and dogs. And, gosh, visiting y'all at your house was just special time for me, and, gosh, I'm stuck. So I love you all.
Thank you, Bob. I've only been on council as mayor for 10 years, so I haven't known him nearly as long as most of the people that are here. But I will say that Sam, one of the greatest things about serving in public service is you get to meet some really amazing people. I've served with some amazing people, some incredibly talented people, and I've worked with some incredibly talented staff and members of the employees in Alpharetta. There is nobody smarter than Sam. He was a brilliant man. And you know how brilliant he was, because he didn't have to tell you, he was a brilliant man. You learn in politics, the smarter the people are, the less they have to say. But when Sam said something, boy, you paid attention. And they are right, he had a biting sense of humor, and he didn't crack jokes often. That's why it catch you off-guard so much and make you laugh. But man, he could drop something on you at the time, and you were just like, did that really just come out of Sam's mouth? He was an amazing man, one of the most amazing people I've ever had the opportunity to meet and to work with. It's an honor to be here to celebrate his life tonight. I just wish he were here for us to celebrate with him. So I will read the proclamation by the mayor and the city council, the city of Alpharetta, Georgia, Sam Thomas, a celebration of life. Whereas Sam Thomas was born in Decatur, Georgia in 1950, he earned a Bachelor of Business Administration with honors from Georgia State University, and his Juris Doctor cum laude from University of Georgia. And whereas Sam Thomas joined the law firm of Bogus, Kyle, Birch, and Medlin of Atlanta in 1975, and became the city attorney for Alpharetta in 1985. And whereas Sam Thomas was passionate about municipal law and development, he was instrumental in helping to establish Alpharetta's city municipal codes and charter, including the passage of the city's first Recreation and Parks General Obligation Bond in 1995, which provided funding to acquire Will's Park from Fulton County, and provided the city's contribution to the Isaacson YMCA. And whereas Sam Thomas cared for and was an integral part of his community, in addition to coaching his daughter's softball team of North Park, he also served as a board member of the Alpharetta Softball Association. He also served on the board of the Alpharetta Convention and Visitors Bureau, and whereas Sam Thomas was a past president of the Greater Atlanta Christian School Booster Club, and a big fan of the Georgia Bulldogs. He was an inspiration to all who knew him. And whereas Sam Thomas, above all, will be remembered for his loyalty, friendship, strong faith, work ethic, thoughtfulness, and of course, his witty sense of humor. And whereas Sam Thomas passed away, August 24th, 2021, and is survived by his wife of 44 years, Dale, their three children, Jared, Jennifer, Laura, and Joseph, and three granddaughters, Paige, Michael, and Anders. Whereas Sam Thomas, now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the city of Alpharetta, do hereby thank Sam Thomas for his tireless support of Alpharetta's service to the community and his friendship. He will truly be missed, proclaimed the sixth day of December, 2021. I'd like to present this to you, and I'd also like to present this exceptional service award, that I had certainly hoped to be able to present in person, in honor of his service. Thank you all, thank you for sharing him with us. We love you. Would anybody else like to say anything? Thank you. Thank you for sharing with us. The consent agenda for this evening consists of two items, council meeting minutes from the meeting of November 29th, 2021, and the alcoholic beverage license applications, there are two of which, PH-21-AB-29, BP Gas and Convenience, 3445 Webbridge Road, Alpharetta, Georgia 30005, and PH-21-AB-30, Alpharetta Egg Harbor Cafe, 5966 North Point Parkway, Alpharetta, Georgia 30022, as well as the financial report. So there were three items on the consent agenda. Financial management report for the month ending October 31st, 2021. Is there anyone who would like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell, and second by Councilman Merkel. Any discussion? Councilman Hypes.
I just want to weigh in and say how much I appreciate our new dashboard in the financial management report. And for those who actually read the packet from home and download it, we've got a snapshot dashboard on the first page with essential information, and so, good for the public to know, and as a council member, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please vote yes, otherwise vote no. And it does pass unanimously. Next item up will be a public hearing item, and that's V-21-26 Rosati 294 Karen Drive setback variance. Mr. Woodman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The applicant is requesting a variance to reduce the front setback for a covered patio from 30 feet to 12 feet. There's also variance to allow an eight-foot wall with fencing on a residential property in the downtown overlay. Property is currently under construction with a new single-family detached home. I have the location map on the overhead, the property is located at 294 Karen Drive in the Alpha Park subdivision. Property is about little over half-acre lot, zoned R12. As I mentioned, it's being redeveloped with a two-story, it's about 6,700 square-foot single-family detached home. The UDC requires a 30-foot front building setback, which does apply to a covered patio. This is the site plan that the applicant presented, this Karen Drive and then Devoire Road. The covered patio is in this location here, so that is the subject of the setback reduction from 30 to 12 feet. And then on a residential property, the fence and wall regulations require that fences and walls on a residential property not exceed six feet. Applicant is proposing an eight-foot wall around the perimeter of the property. Going back to the covered patio, this is a sketch of that covered patio. This is a map showing other setbacks in the area, so this is the subject property here. There was an administrative variance that was approved in 2020 for the setback along Devoire Road, reducing that 30-foot setback to 24-foot setback. That applied to the home that's being constructed on the property. The Maxwell across the street has a 10-foot building setback along Devoire. The new home that is directly across the street from this property and fronting on Devoire had an administrative variance to reduce that 30-foot setback to 24. And you may recall the Sedgwick development, that property was rezoned back in 2020 and has a 10-foot setback along Devoire. Going to the variance for the wall, the applicant did pour a concrete wall. There was a permit provided for that wall. What was not shown on that permit and was actually constructed in the field was the additional columns on top of that wall. So the wall, once this is backfilled, the dirt is backfilled against the wall, this is Devoire here, the wall is four foot tall, the columns are an additional four foot on top. So when we saw this, we notified the applicant that was already in for the covered patio, that they would also need to apply for a variance for the wall, since those columns represented a total height of eight feet. There's decorative metal fencing proposed between the columns, and this photograph, which is labeled Exhibit B in your packets, represents the metal fencing, decorative metal fencing that would be between the columns. Today, I received some renderings from the applicant. This is, these are renderings of the decorative wall with fencing on top along Karen Drive. This represents a pedestrian entrance going in to the property, so this is along Karen Drive, not along Devoire. And then this is also along Karen Drive, this would be the gated entrance for vehicles. Staff looked at the variance criteria and found that the property does have, there is some hardship here, the property is a corner lot, it's got two road frontages along two streets, Karen Drive and Devoire Road. We believe that the decorative wall will screen the covered porch, and that the, there is a landscape strip located between the sidewalk along Devoire, as well as Karen Drive, and the wall, and that landscape, landscape strip can be planted with landscaping to soften the look of that wall. We are recommending some conditions requiring, as I mentioned, the decorative landscape screening along both roads, as well as some either smooth-coated stucco finish or decorative material along, on the walls and columns. With that, staff is recommending approval of the request, subject to three conditions. First condition, the location, height, and size of the covered porch depicted on the site plan prepared by Moore Urban Forestry, revised 1222-2020, and rendered, rendering labeled Exhibit A shall be permitted with a 12-foot front setback along Devoire Road, as approved by staff. Condition two, I have a slight change to that, a slight addition to condition two, reads wall and columns shall not exceed a total height of eight feet, and shall be covered with smooth, smooth-coated stucco or similar decorative materials substantially similar to the submitted photographic example, labeled Exhibit B, subject to final approval by staff. In condition three, landscape strips shall be heavily planted with decorative screening, landscape material to soften the look of the wall from Devoire Road and Karen Drive, as approved by staff. And that concludes the presentation. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Do we have any questions from council at this time? Thank you, Mr. Woodman. Would the applicant like to come forward at this time?
Hello, my name is Jim Rosati. I've been resident of Alpharetta for, since 1986, and I started Home Fashion Center.
If I could, just for the record, so that we have a public record of it, could you give us your address, please, your residence?
294 Karen Drive, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, uh-huh. So I started a furniture store called Home Fashion Center in right here downtown Alpharetta, 1990, was in that location for 20 years, and somehow faith brought me back to where I used to, I worked for 20 years, and I bought the property right across from it, the complex that's Maxwell, it's called Maxwell now. And of course, I own the store down the street on Highway 9 called Home Fashion Interiors, which slightly changed the name, for, since 2011, we moved to that location. So I built a nice house in Alpharetta, and hoping that, that would, I would kind of create the nicer homes along the side of Devoire and Karen Drive and change the neighborhood. So I'm requesting the variance. Thank you.
Does council have any questions for the applicant? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
But if there's anyone here that would like to come and speak on this item, now's your opportunity to do so. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll offer a motion to approve V-21-26 Rosati/294 Karen Drive setback variance, subject to the conditions as reviewed by Mr. Woodman.
I'll second that.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Richer, and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell, and that was to approve V-21-26 Rosati 294 Karen Drive setback variance, with the conditions as outlined by Mr. Woodman. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes, otherwise vote And it does pass unanimously. So that'll wrap up the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. My agenda that says old business, but we have no items listed, since we have no items listed, we'll move on to new business, and the first item under new business will be replacement of extrication equipment, Public Safety Department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, sir, you have the floor.
Mr. Robinson's not available this evening, so I'm here in his place. The Public Safety Department is seeking approval of extrication equipment to replace our existing equipment, which is hematro-type equipment. equipment, which is Helmatro-type equipment. The company doing business as Georgia Fire and Rescue is the supplier of our, hopefully approved, new equipment at $154,159.64. Currently, the equipment that we're utilizing was purchased in 2009 and is almost 13 years old. We are starting to have some maintenance and repair issues related to the equipment. All the equipment is still functional currently, but we are really starting to, to experience some of those issues related to upkeep and maintaining. The equipment that we would be buying also would be battery-powered, lithium battery system. It is a little, little smaller, a little more compact, comparable to the hydraulic system that we're currently using that utilizes hoses that go to a power unit and then to the extrication tools. This purchase would involve replacing all equipment on all fire apparatus, so it would be an upgrade of all of our equipment. There is funding available through a capital account for this year, and I know our finance department has worked out the financing for this purchase.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have any questions for Chief McCullers? Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Shapiro, before we go, I know there's a resolution that needs to be read.
For this one, I'm sorry. I don't think so. There is. All right, I'm sorry.
It must be a lease.
I have two other resolutions.
So whenever we lease, instead of purchasing, we have to do a resolution.
Forgive me. In fact, I wrote that resolution, so. "A resolution of the Mayor and Council of the City of Alfreda, Georgia, authorizing the execution and delivery of certain schedules and other documents relating to the master equipment lease/purchase agreement with Bank of America Public Capital Corp. as lessor, executed on February 18, 2016, for the acquisition, purchase, financing, and leasing of certain equipment within the terms herein provided, authorizing the execution and delivery of other documents required in connection therewith, and authorizing all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this resolution. Whereas the City of Alfreda, the LSE, a city in, in politic duty organized and existing under the laws of the State of Georgia, is authorized by the laws of the State of Georgia to purchase, acquire, and lease personal property, tangible and intangible, for the benefit of the LSE and its inhabitants, and to enter into contracts with respect thereto. Whereas the governing body of the LSE, the council, has determined that a need exists for the acquisition, purchase, and financing of certain property consisting of extrication rescue equipment, collectively the equipment on the terms herein provided. And whereas, in order to acquire such equipment, the LSE entered into that certain master equipment lease/purchase agreement, the agreement with Bank of America Public Capital Corp. or one of its affiliates as lessor, the lessor on February 18, 2016, and separate schedules thereto substantially in the form attached to the agreement. And whereas, the council deems it for the benefit of the LSE and for the efficient and effective administration thereof to enter into the agreement and separate schedules relating thereto from time to time as provided in the agreement for the purchase, acquisition, financing, and leasing of the equipment to be therein described on the terms and conditions therein and herein provided. Now therefore be it and is hereby resolved by the governing body of the LSE as follows: Section 1, findings and determinations. It is hereby found and determined that the terms of the agreement, including the form of Schedule of Property Number 6 and the forms of the rental payment schedule attached to Schedule of Property Number 6, are in the best interest of the LSE for the acquisition, purchase, financing, and leasing of the equipment. Section 2, approval of documents, the form, terms, and provisions of Schedule of Property Number 6 and the attached rental payment schedule are hereby approved and substantially the forms presented at this meeting with such insertions, omissions, and changes as shall be authorized by the Mayor and City Clerk of the LSE, the authorized officials. Executing the same, the execution of such documents being conclusive evidence of such approval, the authorized officials are hereby authorized and directed to sign and deliver on behalf of the LSE Schedule of Property Number 6, under which a separate lease as defined in the agreement is created. The rental payment schedule and any related exhibits attached thereto, if and when required, provided, however, that without further authorization from the governing body of the LSE, a) the aggregate principal component of rental payments under all leases entered into pursuant to the agreement for Schedule of Property Number 6 shall not exceed $154,160; b) the maximum term under any lease entered into pursuant to the agreement as amended shall not exceed five years for the Schedule of Property Number 6; and c) the maximum interest rate used to determine the interest component of the rental payments under the lease shall not exceed the lesser of the maximum rate permitted by law or 1.3113% per annum. The authorized officials may sign and deliver the lease to the lessor on behalf of the LSE pursuant to the agreement on such terms and conditions as they shall determine are in the best interest of the LSE up to the maximum aggregate principal component, maximum term, and maximum interest rate provided above. The foregoing authorization shall remain in effect for a period of two years from the date hereof, during which the authorized officials are authorized to sign and deliver leases pursuant to the agreement on the terms and conditions herein provided and to be provided in the lease. Section 3, ratification of Schedule of Properties Numbers 1 through 5, Schedule of Properties Numbers 1 through 5 and all related documents previously entered into by the parties are hereby confirmed and ratified in all respect. Section 4, other actions authorized. The officers and employees of the LSE shall take all action necessary or reasonably required by the parties to the agreement to carry out, give effect to, and consummate the transactions contemplated thereby, including the execution and delivery of final acceptance certificates, escrow agreements, and any tax certificate in agreement as contemplated in the agreement, and to take all action necessary in conformity therewith, including, without limitation, the execution and delivery of any closing and other documents required to be delivered in connection with the agreement in each lease. Section 4, no general liability. Nothing contained in this resolution, the agreement, any lease, any escrow agreement, nor any other instrument shall be construed with respect to the LSE as incurring a pecuniary liability or charge upon the general credit of the LSE or against its taxing power, nor shall the breach of any agreement contained in this resolution, the agreement, any lease, any escrow agreement, or any other instrument or document executed in connection therewith impose any pecuniary liability upon the LSE or any charge upon its general credit or against its taxing power, except to the extent that the rental payments payable under each lease entered into pursuant to the agreement are limited obligations of the LSE subject to annual appropriation as provided in the agreement. Section 5, appointment of authorized LSE representatives. The Mayor and City Clerk of the LSE are hereby designated to act as authorized representatives of the LSE for purposes of each lease and the related escrow agreement until such time as the governing body of the LSE shall designate any other or different authorized representatives for purpose of the agreement in any lease or escrow agreement. Section 6, severability. If any section, paragraph, clause, or provision of this agreement shall, for any reason, be held to be invalid or unenforceable, the invalidity or unenforceability of such section, paragraph, clause, or provision shall not affect any of the remaining provisions of this resolution. Section 7, effective date. This resolution shall be effective immediately upon its approval and adoption."
Thank you, Mr. Stacy. The lease is almost up now. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
But if anyone would like to come forward and speak on this matter, now's your chance. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that council approve the purchase of extrication rescue equipment from Helmatro Rescue Equipment Doing Business as Georgia Fire and Rescue Supply in an amount not to exceed $154,159.64, and to adopt the resolution as read by City Attorney Stacy and for the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
Have a motion by Councilman Hypes, second by Councilman Merkel, and that was to approve the purchase of the extrication rescue equipment from Helmatro Rescue Equipment DBA Georgia Fire and Rescue Supply in an amount not to exceed $154,159.64. Resolution as read by City Attorney Mike Stacy. Everyone clear on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote no. And it does pass unanimously. Next item up under "new business" will be the resolution, another resolution, to adopt the five ethic principles set forth in the Georgia Municipal Association Certified City of Ethics Program. Ms. Shapiro, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The next item is a recommendation from staff for Mayor and Council to adopt a resolution in order for the City of Alfreda to maintain its status as a certified city of ethics through the Georgia Municipal Association's program. So this program, they have five ethics principles that kind of guide municipalities on ethical issues, and as a two-step certification process, cities are required every four years to recertify. So the last time that Alfreda certified as a certified city of ethics was in 2018. So the two portions of that is for, one, to adopt a resolution of GMA's five ethics principles, and then, second, to have an ethics ordinance in place in the municipality that meets GMA's minimum standards as far as having a definition section, creating a list of permissible and impermissible activities by elected officials, and then also have due process and punishment procedures for any elected official that could violate an ethics ordinance. Once we have those two items in place, which we, if approved tonight, we will, we'll forward those to GMA for the recertification for the next four years. And that is all I have. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions from council from Ms. Shapiro? Mr. Stacy, please read the resolution.
A resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Alfreda, Georgia, to adopt the five ethics principles set forth in the Georgia Municipal Association Certified City of Ethics Program. Whereas the Board of Directors of the Georgia Municipal Association, GMA, has established a certified city of ethics program, and whereas the City of Alfreda wishes to retain its status as a certified city of ethics under the GMA program, and whereas as part of the certification process requires the Mayor and Council to subscribe to the ethics principles approved by the GMA board, whereas the GMA board's approved ethics principles are further established and defined within the Code of Ethics and Conduct as codified in Chapter 2, Article 5 of the Code of the City of Alfreda, Georgia. Now therefore be it resolved by the Mayor and City Council of the City of Alfreda, Georgia, that as a group and as individuals, the Mayor and City Council subscribe to the following ethics principles and pledge to conduct its affairs accordingly: serve others, not ourselves; use resources with efficiency and economy; treat all people fairly; use the power of our position for the well-being of our constituents; create an environment of honesty, openness, and integrity.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
But if there's anyone that would like to come forward and speak on the ethics resolution, now's your chance. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I would like for a resolution to adopt the five ethics, ethics principles set forth in the Georgia Municipal Association's Certified City of Ethics Programs as presented tonight by Lauren Shapiro.
We have a motion by Councilman Merkel and a second by Councilman Hypes, and that was to approve the resolution to adopt the five ethics principles set forth in the resolution as read by City Attorney Mike Stacy. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote no. And it does pass unanimously. Mr. Regus, I believe you are slated to take up the joint resolution designating a portion of the Georgia 400 corridor as the technology corridor.
I am, Mayor. About a month ago, County Manager Kevin Tanner in Forsyth County approached me and was saying that their Board of Commissioners was going to be asking the legislature to designate that portion of Georgia 400 in Forsyth County from McGuinness Ferry up to Highway 20, which is about seven miles, as the technology corridor. He asked me if we wanted to, to join with them for that part of Georgia 400 in the City of Alfreda, or what part of Georgia 400 in the city would we want, and if we wanted to do that. So I spoke to Councilman Mitchell, Mayor Pro Tem Mitchell, Councilman Burnett, and we came to the conclusion that, you know, we are the technology city of the South. We have in the, in our corridor just hundreds and hundreds of technology companies that, and we consider ourselves the leader in that. And, and so it would be beneficial that we join Forsyth County in jointly asking the legislature to approve Georgia 400 from the city limits of Alfreda on the south side to Highway 20 up in Forsyth County. I spoke to Kathy Cook about this, and, you know, I think we, we see more upside than downside in it, and, and also spoke to Janet Rogers, since it's also, all of Georgia 400 is considered the hospitality highway from where it merges, I believe, with I-85 up to where it ends. And, and this would have no bearing on that either. So it would continue to be the hospitality highway, and, and it would be designated the technology corridor from, again, just south of Mansell Road to Highway 20 in Forsyth County.
Councilwoman Richard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two questions, Bob. Have we reviewed this with Tech Alfreda, Karen Cashin at Tech Alfreda?
I believe Kathy Cook did speak to Karen about it, and, and again, more upside than downside and good for economic development. You know, the resolution calls out that we do have the Innovation Center here operated by Tech Alfreda, so they're mentioned in the resolution.
And will we, will there be signs placed along that section of 400?
Yes, there will be.
Designating it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council at this time? Thanks, sir. Mr. Stacy.
A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Forsyth County, Georgia, and the Mayor and Council of the City of Alfreda, Georgia, requesting the designation of a portion of the Georgia 400 corridor as the technology corridor. Whereas Forsyth County is an emerging technology hub that is home to nearly 8,000 residents working in technology jobs, with 5,100 being employed in Forsyth County. Whereas the City of Alfreda, known nationally as the technology city of the South, is at the core of Georgia's innovative economy, being home to more than 700 technology companies and more than one quarter of metro Atlanta's top technology firms. And whereas to foster the growth of information technology and innovation through local and abroad collaboration, Forsyth County and its Board of Commissioners have begun to establish part of South Forsyth's identity by approving a rezoning application for 118 acres on Atlanta Highway for over 900,000 square feet of commercial and industrial buildings to be known as the Forsyth Technology Park, that will result in the creation of more than 700 technology jobs. Whereas approximately 30,283 Alfredans, 82% of Alfreda's resident workforce is employed in the professional technology sector. And whereas, since its founding in 2016, the City of Alfreda's Technology Innovation Center operated by Tech Alfreda has attracted more than $123 million in investor funding for its member companies, is currently incubating 55 tech startups that are doing business in 28 countries, and has graduated 16 companies and have created 600 new technology jobs in Alfreda and over 1,000 in Georgia. Now therefore be it resolved by the Forsyth County, Georgia Board of Commissioners and the Mayor and City Council of the City of Alfreda, Georgia, that we together respectfully request that the Georgia's General Assembly designate that section of Georgia State Route 400 from Mansell Road in the City of Alfreda North to State Highway 20 in Forsyth County as the technology corridor, in furtherance of economic development and the broad identity of these communities as one of the nation's preeminent locations for innovation and the growth of the technology sector.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this?
We do not, sir.
But if there's anyone here that wants to speak on the resolution for the Georgia 400 corridor as the technology corridor, now's your opportunity. Seeing none, close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the joint resolution designating a portion of Georgia 400 corridor as the technology corridor, as read by City Attorney Mike Stacy.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilman Burnett, second by Mayor Pro Tem Mitchell, and that was to approve the resolution designating a portion of the Georgia 400 corridor as the technology corridor, and the resolution as read by Mr. City Attorney Mike Stacy. Any discussion?
Thank you, Ms. Burnett.
This, this is a great idea, because for 30 years, our city leaders have been building up our technology corridor and the emphasis on technology and innovation here in Alfreda, and it's continued on by Kathy Cook and, and others, and Karen Cashin and, and others who participate, and also all of our businesses and technology corporations who contribute to the whole emphasis on technology. So I just think this is great, as Forsyth County begins its infancy in the technology. We'll, we'll continue to be the leader in, in this and, and lead people out of Atlanta into a better future right here in Alfreda. So, thank you.
Councilman Burnett.
That was well done. And I, I would like to thank Bob for doing this, and Cindy Mills and Kevin Tanner for honestly extending us the opportunity, because they were going to do it anyway, and they have, that, that county commission has really come a long way with, since the McGuinness Ferry Road project, it becoming solutions-oriented partners with us. That, that relationship is certainly in the bright sunshine today. And thank you to Bob and Kevin Tanner for babysitting. And thank you to Bob and Kevin Tanner for babysitting the project. Thank you.
Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve the resolution designating a portion of Georgia 400 as the technology corridor, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously. Next item up will be the Second Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement between the city of Alpharetta, Georgia and Fulton County, Georgia. Mr. Regus, you still have the floor.
Back up a minute on that resolution with us, us in Forsyth County. I tasked that to James, because each entity was going to do their own resolution. And I said, what if we can do just one? Everybody signs. And so that's a cool thing to do. And James, thanks for wordsmithing that and putting that together. So before you now is the Second Amendment to our agreement with Fulton County, where we provide traffic safety and security services at their North Fulton COVID-19 testing site. They not only test folks there, but they give vaccinations there also. We entered into our first agreement with the county, gosh, back in 2020, when they opened up their testing center. They asked us if we would provide traffic and safety, and we asked if they would reimburse us. They said yes. So, you know, gosh, over 18 months later, and over $320,000 into it, we bring you the Second Amendment to that. We want to keep that relationship going. So this amendment extends the time and also extends the amount with an additional $80,000 to continue to provide traffic, safety, and security at that location.
Thanks, sir. Do we have any questions for Mr. Regus on this item? Mr. Stacey? There's a lot of whereas's in this IGA. Is there anything necessary for you to read on this?
No, sir.
Just checking. Thank you. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
But if anyone wants to come forward and speak on the IGA with Fulton, IGA, Intergovernmental Agreement with Fulton County, now's your chance. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from counsel? I think we're going to have a motion from counsel.
I'm making a motion, Mr. Mayor, to approve the Second Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement between the city of Alpharetta, Georgia and Fulton County, as presented tonight by Mr. Regus.
We have a motion by Councilman Merkel and a second by Councilman Hypes, and that was to approve the Second Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement between the city of Alpharetta, Georgia and Fulton County, as outlined by City Administrator Bob Regus. Any discussion? All those in favor, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote no. And it does pass unanimously. So that'll wrap up new business for this evening. We do have one workshop. Workshop will be findings and recommendations report from the 2021 consultant study of the Department of Information Technology. Mr. Regus?
Mayor, counsel, and at this point, I'll bring up Rodney Turner and Brad Goodman with Layer Three Communications to present their findings to y'all. Thanks, sir. Sure. Councilman Richard?
Before we get to hear the presentation from the consultants, would you mind just reviewing with everyone what the objective was in regards to the assessment?
Sure. For the course of the last, I guess, four or five years, we've wanted to do what we call deep dives into departmental operations. We did one with public safety, and we thought it was good at this point to look at our IT department. It's, we want to be smart in the allocation of resources, both now and in the future, and we wanted a good look at our strengths and weaknesses now, and a roadmap for the future through the eyes of the private sector and through the eyes of folks who do this. So y'all awarded the contract for the assessment, and now we bring you those findings.
Great. It's been a while since we've had any discussion around it.
Right.
So I just thought it was helpful to bring it. This was a output of our last retreat, if I'm correct. I think this was one of the action items that we had.
It was, yeah.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for having us here tonight. Yes, so my name is Rodney Turner. I'm the president and CEO of Layer Three Communications. We are a professional, we are a regional professional services organization that focuses on infrastructure design, data center, infrastructure security, and cloud solutions. We've been in business for over 23 years. We're based in the metro Atlanta area. We have a heavy focus on subject matter expertise. We've made an investment in engineering capabilities. Our engineering resources outnumber our business development resources by about four to one, which is a heavy focus on the technical side. We have a 24-by-7 network operations center. We have a security operations center. We are ISO 9001 certified. We have in-house custom application developers. We have our own cloud and hosting facilities based in, out of some resources in Atlanta and some resources in other parts of the country. And we're also a Microsoft cloud service provider. So that's just a little bit of our qualifications. And it looks like we lost the...
Yeah, it's coming.
This is just a sample of some customer reference accounts. About two-thirds of our business is in state and local government. We've recently done projects for the city of Houston, the city of Savannah here in Georgia. We have ongoing objectives with the Cab County government, Harris County in Texas. We do ongoing projects for the Tennessee state government, and state, local government and education, again, represents about two-thirds of our overall business. For this project, in terms of identifying a roadmap for the future from a technology perspective, we needed to do a number of assessments to get a feel for what the internal infrastructure, the posture of the internal infrastructure. So we broke this down and looked at five general areas. One area was a network assessment. This included an assessment of your wired and wireless campus LAN network. We looked at your core routing, and we also looked at your firewalls and security topology and architecture. We did a data center assessment, which gave us an opportunity to do a deep dive into the server and storage architecture, your backup strategies, and your cloud strategies. We also did a help desk review. We took a look at tickets, statistics, open tickets, reopen tickets, escalations, a number of different key performance indicator metrics on the help desk side. We also did a deep dive from a business continuity perspective. This is where we really look at things like real-time objectives, recovery time objectives, and recovery point objectives. So what systems can be down? How long can they can be down? And how much data can you lose? So that was really the focus from a business continuity perspective. And then we did a security vulnerability analysis, and we analyzed security vulnerabilities for each device that has a connection to the network. In addition to that, we did some network performance monitoring analysis, and we established some baseline network performance key metrics as it relates to your infrastructure. These assessments are detailed in five different appendices for our report that total almost 200 pages of content that we created from the analysis of this audit. We took those assessments and we boiled them down to a small number of high priority recommendations that we want to present in a little bit deeper dive for you tonight. And I'm going to ask Brad Goodman to dive a little bit deeper into the recommendations and priorities and justifications for that. Thank you.
Yeah, so thanks, Rodney. Thanks, Mayor and council. Yeah, briefly, from our perspective, we did a process to grade your adoption as it pertains to technology, how secure you were, how much you were using, the products and the software that you had, to make sure that, you know, staff was taking advantage of what you guys have made investments in. And then on top of that, looking at your infrastructure as it pertains to best practices. So are you adopting, are you adhering to best practices, not only from an infrastructure perspective, but from a security standpoint, from a policy perspective? So we had roughly eight engineers from our staff work with Randy's team, which I will tell you was, quite frankly, a joy. So I worked in local government for about 10 years, and it was good to, you know, be able to commiserate with them on some of the challenges that they have, and then also to be able to encourage them on that. We were impressed with the quality of staff that you have. So you actually should be very, very proud of what you have from an IT organization standpoint. We did find a number of deficiencies. So what you'll see in both of these phases is we graded all of the things that we were assessing based off of where the health was and what risk that particular component gave to the city. So we graded them based off of, again, what I said, best practices, adoption, those type of things. And then those generated a list of recommendations you guys have received or should have received in IT executive summary review, where we broke down all of the recommendations, some different options to address those, with also the financial components that would be tied to that. Looking at just a handful of those things, I want to focus on those, so you're keyed into those. In particular, you do have a couple of scenarios, which we see this in municipal environments, where there are a couple of key employees that they do a lot for you, and they are the one that does those things. So there is specifically one person on your staff that we absolutely would recommend that you look at hiring an additional analyst to offload from that person, and also be a backstop for that person as well. So we are recommending additional staffing from that perspective. As it pertains to your help desk, you actually have a very good platform that Randy has chosen. The challenge that we ran into is the personnel that are responding to support, to support your organization should not be doing that. Almost 25% of your support calls are handled by managers, IT managers. Those are high-dollar, high-value employees that are ultimately wasting or spending cycles that should be spent on other things. So we are making a recommendation that you do address that. We've given a couple of options to move forward from that standpoint. On the infrastructure side of the house, there are a number of high availability recommendations that we would make. And as it pertains specifically to business continuity and disaster recovery, business continuity, when we're looking at that, it's really, how do we minimize downtime? And then in the case of disaster recovery, if something bad should happen to the city of Alpharetta, can you recover from that? What data would you lose? How long would it take for you to get up and running? So we have made a number of recommendations. I point out that in particular, because I was actually relatively impressed. You know, we had opportunities for over a six-month period of working hand-in-hand with your staff, and they were instrumental in actually putting forth some of our recommendations. They actually started those processes. So as it pertains to, like, business continuity, disaster recovery, we actually saw them doing a lot of the remediation before we were able to even generate the content. So I was very encouraged from that standpoint, that they just took the initiative to start doing things. If it was that critical, they moved forward on it. And even Randy as well, some of the additional products that they had already moved forward with buying and actually implementing. So that was very, very powerful. On the security side of the house, there are a number of things that we made from a recommendation perspective. One of the most crucial ones is a security operations center. Alpharetta has a lot of tools to monitor and maintain the systems. The problem is, security is a 24-by-7 response, right? So we are recommending that the city look to outsource a security operations center to be able to respond as soon as possible when systems become vulnerable or if they become compromised. So we are making that recommendation. The other big recommendation is IT governance. We saw a lot of scenarios where IT was having to make decisions that, quite frankly, your departments should be making. I'll give you a perfect example. The departments are picking applications, which is what they should be doing, but they don't necessarily, they aren't providing boundaries or guidelines for how should this application or this process be protected? How much data can I afford to lose? How robust does this platform need to happen or need to be? So we are recommending for much better IT governance as an organization, which, that is a challenge for a lot of municipalities, but we would strongly encourage the city to look at having all department heads be part of an IT governance, so everybody understands what the technology experience is from an end-user perspective, and to make sure that they are enforcing security appropriately and giving guidance to IT on how things need to be protected, how things need to be maintained, as opposed to IT just making a blanket decision across the board. And then the last thing would be a network operations center, which kind of goes hand-in-hand with a security operations standpoint, but it's focused on availability, not security. So like I said, you guys have a detailed list of those specific projects that we are recommending that the city move forward from, or move forward with. Any questions on those?
Councilman Richard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you give us, spend some time talking about, I understand that you spent six months working with our IT department. What process did you use to assess the satisfaction level with our department heads and employees, specifically around the help desk? Because I hear, as a councilperson, frequently concerns and dissatisfaction with that particular customer service component. And can you give us some insight as to how you assessed the department heads? Do they have accurate expectations? And did you do any kind of employee survey to get any feedback from employees?
So there is potentially a third phase that would do a lot of that. Specifically to help desk, we looked, the platform you guys have is actually a very good platform, because it gives you a lot of metrics of how long a ticket is on hold. If a ticket is closed, is it reopened? Who fixed the problem? Was the ticket escalated multiple times, so you had multiple people working on it? So we looked at all of those metrics. And then there, so from a platform perspective, you guys have been on this system, Randy, almost two years now, right? So this will be...
A year and a half.
Yeah, a little over a year and a half, full adoption for a little north of a year. So we had some pretty substantial data points from that perspective. There actually is a very large C stat component that is part of your customer satisfaction component that's part of your ticketing platform, that in the beginning was leveraged substantially, where end-user would respond back. So when a ticket is closed, it sends them a notification, and they have an opportunity to say how they were serviced, for lack of a better term. There was a high level of that initially, but very limited on, you know, as time grew on. So we would expect to see those type of things as part of that process. We know that it is a challenge from your organization on providing a good service. And what we saw a lot was tickets being moved through multiple people, or a problem would be addressed, and then it'll be reopened immediately. The other thing that we saw, and this goes back to operations center staffing, you are in a 24-by-7 organization, right? The problem with IT is, there are a lot of people responding to specific things, and they're on call all the time. So the tickets that would come in on, like, Friday afternoon would not be addressed until a Monday morning. So there were a lot of scenarios where we saw that, which is why we made a recommendation from a help desk standpoint.
Okay, so just to give me a quick yes or no, did you, did you spend any time with our department heads outside of the IT department?
Only finance was the only department head that we spoke to.
Okay. And then from an employee feedback survey system, there was nothing done?
We used the data that was in the system.
In the system. And so you're making a recommendation that we should be hiring... In the system. And so you're making a recommendation that we should be hiring two heads in the help desk area?
We made three recommendations.
Right.
As it pertains.
Okay. Three different ones, but one of them is?
One of three. There's three.
That's one of three. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And I guess I'm struggling with that, those three different recommendations, when, as an organization, there doesn't, from what I'm hearing, there didn't seem to be much interaction with department heads to understand from them how this, I mean, the help desk is integral to the entire employee base. So
Absolutely.
That's a concern for me. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Since it's workshop, we won't have public comment on this item. That's not them we'll be voting on. Mr. Bundy, did you have anything to add to the presentation? Thanks, sir. Well, that'll wrap up the workshop then. Now's an opportunity for any of you here from the public who've not had an opportunity to voice your concerns or input. Now you have your chance. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close public comment. Do we have any reports? Councilman Merkel?
Yes, sir. I regret that I was not able to be there Friday night. We had a prior commitment to the, at an annual event that we do. But there was a very successful Evans Family Christmas tree lighting Friday night. I saw a lot of pictures on social media, a lot of comments, a lot of comments in regards to tradition, like it's starting a new tradition. So with the evolution of the downtown area, I think it's very fitting. It's an amazing tree. I want to thank the council members that work with the Evans family to get that as a government-private partnership, and understand they did a great job at speaking that night. So we're going to continue that through, as we talked about, through the season of celebration, which is going to continue this Friday night from 5 to 9 o'clock. In addition to the holiday decor and lights, this Friday will feature photos with Santa. We're going to have snow flurries, fire pits, strolling characters. You'll have to give me more details. There were strolling characters out there about every night, but I guess we're going to have some special ones this Friday. And the North Fulton Community Charities truck will also be onsite, so you can load your canned food donations directly onto the truck. If you can't make it and still want to make donations, we have bins out front. You can drop off canned goods here at City Hall, and we'll see to it they get to North Fulton Charity. So this will be number two of the three-week series.
Any other reports? Councilwoman Richard?
Just another reminder, the community zoning information is this Wednesday at 6:00 PM via Zoom.
Thank you. Any other reports? Since that seems to be all the reports we have this evening, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for joining us. Look forward to seeing you next time. This meeting is adjourned.